All commissioners are in attendance. Let's move on to future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they would like to add for discussion at a future? Okay, then moving along to our discussion items. We have four of them this evening and we'll begin with an hours-long discussion, or less, of our stormwater management permits. And so we have here Nancy Groucho who's going to introduce the senior engineer called the court director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, commissioners. We are indulging ourselves in an entire hour of your attention to discuss stormwater management in Oregon City. Commissioner Nacita had requested, oh, maybe about six weeks ago, that we discuss stormwater quality and quality, stormwater standards in Oregon City. And so as sort of the kickoff to that kind of discussion, we felt it was really very important that the commission become well-informed about the current stormwater management program. And as you probably know, Oregon City Public Works is responsible for operating and maintaining the storm system. And it used to be all about flooding, and these days it's much more complicated. It's about flows and water quality, in addition to protecting private and public property, of course. So the kinds of work we do includes, of course, capital improvements, but it also has, we take care of detention ponds, we inspect clean and maintain pipes, we do have underground detention facilities, we maintain and take care of and clean catch basins, we do street sweeping, we also have standards for new development that address stormwater flows and quality, water quality. And those are just a couple of examples of the kind of different variety of activities that our department undertakes to maintain and operate the system. So tonight, we're going to talk to you about, just generally about stormwater. We're going to present to you a little bit of the history of how stormwater's been managed in Oregon City, particularly since the, since the city obtained a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit through the MS4 system with DEQ for municipal separate stormwater, storm sewer systems. And that's been ongoing since the mid-'90s. And then we're also going to talk about, there's a new permit renewal process that we've been going through now for a couple of years. We're going to talk about that. So you get some really good background on what's been done in the past, what are the problems, what's facing the city in the near future. And we have Krista Reinger, she's a, she's one of our consultants. She works for Braden Caldwell, and she's really an expert on the stormwater permitting system. John Lewis works closely with her on our annual reports and all of the MS4 permit compliance activities in the city, and of course, direct staff to do what they're supposed to do. So with that, I'd like to introduce Krista. And we also wanted to make sure that our legal counsel, Bill Kapisman, was here tonight because there's always legal implications with an environmental permit such as our MS4 permit for stormwater. So Bill will interject with status of our, actually, our previous or existing MS4 permit has been going through litigation for quite a few years now. And then he will also address some of the legal issues in our next round of permitting. So Krista, would you like to just go ahead and give the presentation? And John and I'll kind of jump in when we think we want to add something. And if you want to ask, how do you want to do questions, Krista? Do you want to wait or?
Talk about leaving until the end?
Okay.
Just clarifying.
I have no pads, so we can make it. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. So first, I just wanted to throw up a list of acronyms because these are pretty commonly used. Nancy already covered two there in the middle, MS4, and you know, we have an MS4 permit that stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And PDES is the type of permit that is National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So those acronyms get thrown out a lot. And we have to do a stormwater management plan, a swamp, we call them, underneath the permit. The first two, BMP, our Best Management Practices, those can refer to anything we do in our stormwater management program. It could be street sweeping, it could be a detention pond, anything we do to reduce pollutants in stormwater. And MEP is the standard we're held to in the permit, maximum extent practicable. We're supposed to reduce pollutant loads to the maximum extent practicable. Although, all those people just want you to have an acronym. And then TMDL is another pertinent, relevant Clean Water Act requirement that kind of links with our permit, so that's a total maximum daily load. So again, as Nancy mentioned, I'm going to start out just what is the problem with water quality and stormwater, and what are the standards we're held to? I'll just give a quick background on the history of the, of the permit so you can see where we are now. And then John, I think, is going to go over Oregon City's specific stormwater management program so you can see the types of things that we, that we do for the program. And then I'll talk about, you know, we're being required to do a lot of new things with this new permit being issued, and it's going to require more resources, and so I want to explain what those new requirements are. So I'll start out with just what is stormwater runoff? It's the precipitation that falls on the ground and works its way over the surface into our streams and rivers. And what's happened is with new development, we have impervious surfaces, roads, parking lots, that prevent the water from being taken up by vegetation and prevent it from being, from soaking into the ground. And before development, you know, in a typical average storm, runoff might be about 10% of all the precipitation coming down. The other 90% either went into the ground or went into the, through uptake of the vegetation and, you know, evacueated, transpired into the air. So it was a small portion with all the vegetation that we had on the ground. And now with development, it's more like 55, 60% of the precipitation that runs off and goes into the streams and rivers, and, you know, much less of it is going to the ground, which we need for our, you know, our summertime stream flows, and less of it is being taken up by vegetation. So when it runs over the ground, it captures a lot of pollutants along the way, and the common pollutants of concern, I listed up here, sediment, nutrients from, you know, fertilizers, pesticides from landscaping, oil and grease from vehicles, metals, lots of heavy metals from vehicles, industrial and commercial activities, bacteria, comes from all sorts of stuff, and I'll, I have another slide about that later, and then just the typical litter. And now, you know, DEQ is focusing a lot more on toxics, too, so there's a lot of stuff in there. In addition to the pollutants that are in the water, just this increased flow is a problem, too, and it's causing downcutting of streams. And DEQ is starting to address this issue as well. We've been very focused on reducing pollutants, and now we have to get into reducing flows as well. So this is, these next couple of slides, I know they're complicated, but I just want to touch on it to sort of make a point about the connection between these two Clean Water Act programs. This first slide is the TMDL program, and the next slide is the NPDS program. The TMDL program, they're basically state standards, I think Commissioner Nacita mentioned those at the last meeting, that exist for protecting water quality. And those are, you know, a list of concentrations that should be met in stream. So with monitoring, if you're going out and monitoring your creeks and they show that those standards are being exceeded, that creek gets put on a list. It's called a 303D list. And so once it's on a list, DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality, is supposed to develop what's called a total maximum daily load. It's a document or a program for those water bodies. And what they do is they figure out how much load the water body can take without exceeding the standards, and then they divide that up among all the dischargers or jurisdictions or treatment plants, so that hopefully, if everyone's just discharging what they're supposed to, they won't exceed the water quality standard. So Oregon City has a TMDL for the Willamette River for bacteria, mercury, and temperature, because those three things are being exceeded in the Willamette River. The TMDL program is considered to have numeric limits. There are actual, actual loads that you are supposed to meet, and so it's referred to as having numeric limits. And it's divided into two types of loads. There are loads for non-point sources, which just means things that flow over the ground that aren't permitted. And then there is also loads that are allocated, they're called waste load allocations, for anything that's in a permit. So because your stormwater is covered by a permit, it's listed a point source, and it has those specific waste loads. So here's what makes it confusing, is that we also have this MS4 and PDS program under the Clean Water Act. So it's implemented through MS4 and PDS permits, which we have one to cover the municipal separate storm sewer system in Oregon City. The standard under that permit, there's no numeric limits. It's, you are supposed to develop and implement a stormwater management program that has all these best management practices. And that, you're supposed to do that to reduce pollutant loads to the maximum extent practicable. So because they implement the TMDL through the permits for anything that has a permit, the TMDL has to be brought into our MS4 permit. And so it's been tricky because you have the MS4 permit that has a maximum extent practicable standard, and you're bringing in a numeric standard. So there was sort of a compromise put into our permits to develop benchmarks. And so we're supposed to have these benchmarks, which means we have goals to get to our waste load allocation and do the maximum extent that we can on sort of a path towards meeting those waste load allocations. And we do an adaptive management process. If we're not meeting them, we go back, ramp up our program, and keep working until we eventually get to the waste load allocation. So it's a little bit softer, I would say, than the numeric limits, but it's not just an MEP maximum extent practicable standard either. So that's the most complex part of this presentation, but I wanted to get that point across. Issues with numeric limits. Why have numeric limits not been put in the permits? And why does, would that make it complicated? And one of the issues is just the concentrations of pollutants in stormwater vary so widely. You can collect a sample at one end of a block and at another end of the block and find totally different concentrations. And it could be just because a peck was in the grass right there, it could be from a painting project, there could be construction in a driveway that's releasing sediments. The other issues are that there's historic activities in the watershed that have polluted some of the sediments. You know, we no longer use DDT, but it's still showing up in our streams. So not having control over some of the pollutants that are showing up. Soil types, there's very high phosphorus soils in some areas, and so, you know, there could be a TMDL for phosphorus when it's sort of naturally occurring. Topography, sometimes just the type of storm that comes in, how intense it is, how long it's been dry, can make a real difference in the concentration of pollutants. Other issues is that to see a change, so if we're implementing our programs and we want to see how well are these working, if we want to see a change, just to detect a 5% change in sediments, for example, from our programs, would take 200 samples, because the concentrations are so variable, you need that many to see if you're actually statistically reducing your concentrations. And monitoring is extremely expensive. In addition, it's really difficult to estimate the effect of our best management practices. For example, if you have a public education program, how do you relate that to a concentration in stream? How do you say, because we passed out these brochures, this number of pounds has been reduced from going into our rivers? Some of the best management practices you can measure, if it's a pond, you can look at in-stream and out-stream flows, but some of them are very difficult. Numerical limits also ignore some of the benefits associated with reducing flows. If we have a lot of these, you know, low-impact development type projects where we're infiltrating water into the ground and getting rid of a lot of pollutant load, if you measure the concentration of what's coming off, it still might be kind of high, but there's so much less of it because we've reduced flows. So numeric limits don't take that into account. The other issue is that the water quality standards that they use for the TMDL process apply, apply in-stream. They weren't meant to apply in a pipe. And some of the standards have, don't cover parameters that we're concerned with in stormwater. There is no standard for sediments, for example. So there's, there's some trickiness there. And also that we lack controls to reduce all the sources, and I wanted to get into some examples of that. This graph basically shows, so this is a comparison of concentrations for phosphorus, fecal coliform, copper, and zinc for two creek systems. Bult Creek is the blue bars, and Phantom Creek is a residential urban, urban area. Bult Creek is undeveloped, it's in Forest Park. So you can see, yeah, stormwater has a huge impact, there's a much larger, you know, concentrations of all these parameters. What I also want to show though is the red line going across is the water quality standard. So that you can see phosphorus in Bult Creek, even in an undeveloped area, we're not meeting that standard. Same with the fecal coliform, given, you know, wildlife that is in the Bult Creek drainage area. Copper and zinc we meet in Bult Creek, but not in residential areas. So just to give you sort of a visual picture of what we're talking about. Lack of control over sources of bacteria. So what we do in our, in our stormwater management programs to address bacteria is, well, first of all, you have wastewater treatment plants, but also we try and find cross connections where sewers are going into stormwater where there shouldn't be, people who are dumping things, failing septic systems, and then we educate, you know, we provide education about pet waste and duck feeding and things like that. And beyond that, there's really not much that works for stormwater in terms of a structural type facility to get out the stormwater, unless you're talking about something pretty sophisticated like a treatment plant. This study was conducted out in Washington County. They actually have a process now where you can look at DNA from the bacteria that you collect, so you can see what it's coming from. And this was, they collected, this represents 270 samples, and they could show that 58% of the bacteria they saw was from birds, and 17% rodents and canine, wildlife, feline. There was 9% unknown, but none of them showed a human source. They did see some human sources in-stream, it was about 6%, but in stormwater in the pipes, discharging to the streams, there was no human source. So, you know, it's difficult to control a big load when it's coming from things like birds and rodents. This study has also been done in Peewall at Washington and in Idaho, and all three regional studies have shown the exact same thing, it's predominantly rodents and birds. I guess I would like to mention, too.
Has stormwater measured in streams as opposed to?
No, this is stormwater coming out of pipes, going into the streams. Yeah. They measured the streams, too, and found a little bit of human source in there, but they didn't see it in the pipes. So it was leaking in probably from a failing septic or wasteful, who knows? So that's basically it on water quality issues and the standards we're supposed to meet in water quality. So this, I wanted to give you a little background on our permit. So the permit came out, the requirement came out in the early 1990s, and it was for municipalities with over 100,000 in population. And they were required to get an MS4 and PDS permit for their runoff from their storm sewer system. So in Oregon, this applied to six permit areas representing about 33 jurisdictions. And I wanted to note here, too, that, you know, Gretchen is the major permit holder, for example, for their permit, Eugene, Salem, Portland. Clackamas County is the major permit holder for this area, although it really, how it's ended up working is that there are 13 jurisdictions that almost have an individual permit, all under one umbrella. So even though this permit was intended for, you know, large cities, it's called a Phase One permit, there's a Phase Two permit for smaller cities, we've been held to the standards for a larger city because we are under this Clackamas County umbrella. So in some cases, our program may look more minimal, maybe. I'm not trying to use the word weak because we have a good program, but, you know, agencies like Clean Water Services, that their whole agency, you know, that's all they do. And Gretchen has an entire stormwater department, things like, the same with City of Portland. So it's been challenging to meet the requirements that were intended for a larger city. So first, and we had to submit a two-part permit application. In 1991, we had a couple of years to basically just gather information about our storm system because before they wanted to regulate it and have us develop this stormwater management program, we needed to know what our system looked like. Because back then, I mean, there wasn't a lot of GIS, and so it was gathering maps, we had to go out and collect samples just to see what, what's in our, our data, do some field to get investigations, figure out what our legal authority was if we found somebody dumping, for example. And then propose a stormwater management plan, just sort of initially. The second part of the application was to really flesh out in more detail the stormwater management plan. Again, to include best management practices, to reduce the discharge of pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. And there are basically, it's not a capital program, there are basically six, sometimes they're called minimum measures, there's six categories of best management practices that we had to have. One was controlling runoff from new development. One was, and that was after the development was built, one was controlling runoff during development, so an erosion control program. Illicit discharge elimination program, so that's sort of going after in dry weather and looking at your storm system, if there's a flow during dry weather that probably shouldn't be there, and tracking it upstream to figure out where it's coming from. There's an industrial monitoring and inspection requirement, public education and involvement, so again, educating with brochures and workshops and things like that, and also including the public on stakeholder groups in the development near your plan, putting things on your website. And then there's a big element, this operations and maintenance. And John will get into what Oregon City does for these minimum measures. So we put all this together, a big document, a big stormwater management plan, and our permits were issued in 1995, our first permit, and it was a five-year permit term. The applications for permit renewals then were submitted in 2000. And this is when, I think, a lot of the legal stuff came up with third parties. And the big concern, I think, with third parties is that there should, there should be more in the way of numeric discharge limits in the permit. And again, this concern is linked to the fact that we need to meet these total maximum daily load requirements, and they're numeric, and yet we have this permit that's MEP.
Could you, could you tell us the third-party's meaning exactly?
Oh, I'm sorry, third parties, environmental groups coming together on the permit.
Krista, this might be good opportunity for Bill to provide a little background on the litigation that has occurred in this time period.
And the early 2000s was when this, these issues really started to show up, and the, there was a, the DEQ issued a permit, brought it back for reconsideration, issued it again, and that permit was challenged under both the state's land use system, the Goal Six is involved natural resources, and people had talked a little over DEQ's decision. And also, a, a challenge was made in Circuit Court under an order in other than a contest case, that both those challenges were, were found, you know, found that DEQ had done, had properly implemented the permits. But the Circuit Court case was appealed to DEQ, was appealed to the Court of Appeals, and that case has been argued, and we're waiting for a decision from, from the, from the Court of Appeals. Essentially, the key issue was, as Krista said, is should these MS4 permits be subject to numerical limits? The, there's some other issues, and I'm sure there's better ways to say it. One of the things that did happen is that most of the jurisdictions, you know, instead of everybody defending their own permit, came together and hired one, one person. So I've been watching it, but I have not been deeply involved in it, so I can't tell you, you know, chapter and verse exactly what's happening. But the, the key piece is that the federal, one of the key pieces, federal law says that best management practices, but states can, can adopt more restrictive standards, and the question is whether or not the state of Oregon has adopted a more restrictive standard. So right now, that permit, like I said, the 2004 permit, were issued for 2004 to 2009. The litigation for those permits has taken up that entire, you know, five-year period. The next round is, is starting up, and there've been some initial discussions. Gretchen is apparently out in front of all the, the other cities, whether they like it or not, they're the ones that DEQ has said they're going to focus on first. And there's some initial discussions happening between DEQ and, and the cities about what some of the issues are going to be in this, in this term. And some of the issues involve how to make, you know, one of the, one of the goals of DEQ is adaptive management, the idea that we're going to have these practices out here, but if we figure out that they're not working, or something works better, we're going to allow those to be changed, and how to keep public input into how, how those types of things happen. The whole question of TMDLs, how to pull those in, and there's a, a number of other things. And that process is working itself out, probably the spring and summer is when we're likely to, to see some permit activity on, for Oregon City. And we're, we're not certain where that's going to end up, but Krista may actually be more involved in that than I am, again, also.
And I have some slides about what we're expecting. But you're right, they are expecting a permit to come out in the June, July.
Maybe you can go do that.
Thank you. So yeah, I think that pretty much covered, covered this slide. That long lag period between when we applied for permits and then four years later when we got a permit was related to trying to figure out how to deal with the numeric limit issue, and that's when they came up with this idea of benchmarks that I mentioned earlier. So that was sort of a compromise, and that's what's in there now. Okay, so I'm going to let John talk about this Oregon City's stormwater management program.
Thank you. Well, as Nancy said, in, in the past, many years, it's been related to stormwater flow and retaining that water to slow that water down. So when I came to the city, Oregon City had a pretty significant system of ponds and large pipes, and we continue to maintain those, we still continue to require those of developers. We've got some underground detention tanks, we've probably forgotten the number now, but it's over 80 ponds that we have that we maintain with our own forces and some contract forces. We do, thanks to this commission, over the years, you've approved purchase of vehicles, high-pressure cleaners, I would say our staff could be much bigger to help get ahead of some of these kinds of problems. But we do have an older system, older series of pipes and culverts and things that need maintenance all the time. So we are maintaining those a lot. Catch basin cleaning, we get through 50% of our catch basins every year, and we go back. That's kind of a routine for our summer seasonal helpers, so if you ever see them down there scooping out with hand, you know, both toll digger kind of scoopers, then you know that they're cleaning out your catch basins. Street sweeping, we've got two street sweepers and a full-time street sweeper operator, and we're very, I think, proficient at that. We've got a, a street sweeper operator who's been doing it a long time and takes a lot of pride in what he does, and I think it's been very effective for us. You know, filters, we have, we have a variety of kinds of filters, whether they be the, the kinds of things that you see out in the curbside, which is have a filtered strip of, of grasses and, and rocks and, and landscaping to filter that out, to some mechanicized stuff that you'll actually kind of see later in the, in the next slide. The other thing that I'll mention that's not listed in this slide is, there is a lot of time that goes into just some of this permit management stuff, whether it be working with Krista, or meeting with DEQ, or we've got lots of implementation plans, I brought a few of them, if you'd love to read through them, they're wonderful reading, but, you know, we've got, first of all, the permit application itself was a pretty huge effort. And all of the mapping that we use for our GIS, that GIS group is amazing with regard to the, the kind of product that they produce. But all that takes a lot of time, and when you think about Oregon City as compared to some of its larger agencies who have full divisions who are focused on stormwater and stormwater management and analysis, for instance, you know, we do sampling, but, you know, we don't have environmental scientists on staff to kind of evaluate what that sampling means. So it's a stretch in some cases, and I think some of the new provisions that you'll see in this next contract are really going to tax our ability to get that done. So I mentioned past development, but new development, we've definitely got codes that apply and help us with the flow concern and the water quality issues. So those have been very helpful. I think we've got room to improve in that front. We do.
John, I just want to mention that these specific items are in our stormwater management plan. So we have, this is what, this is part of our regulations is to implement the things that John's going to be going over here.
We, this is current, this is all current.
It's reported every year in our annual report.
Right. So, you know, we've, we've got an extensive plan review process where, again, we're looking to make sure that they meet our, our current design standards for stormwater quality and stormwater detention. We, we've got erosion control inspector, and we issue erosion control permits for every development that comes into place. We conduct inspections, and our public We conduct inspections, and our public education, again, is back to that, the, the, the good news, I think, is we're, we're becoming more regional with that, that message about cleaning up stormwater, as opposed to trying to put together our own little message and, you know, not really, not really connecting with, with the people who might, you know, we might just get a snapshot opportunity to really kind of educate them. So I think we're getting better with that as well. We do a fair amount of screening. Krista mentioned dry weather field screening, that's what we're looking for, flows and pipes that shouldn't have flow in them, and if there's something there, you know, what color is it, how does it smell, and, you know, where should we go track it down? Still response, we're, you know, unless it's hazardous spill, we're the first responders to those kind of things. So cleaning those up, getting them responded to, getting them reported if need be. Cross connections, we spent a lot, lot of time over the last five years of taking stormwater connections that are wastewater connections that are connected to the storm system, because at one time the system was, this city had a combined system. So for the most part, those have been cleaned up, but every once in a while, probably two or three of those a year we find, and we have to, you know, take, disconnect it from the, disconnect the sewer from the stormwater sewer system and get it back connected into the sanitary system. And then we get a variety of public complaints about dirty water or detention ponds that needs, needs work, or erosion, those kind of things, construction-related concerns. This is just one of the things, what we're definitely pursuing. We've got a program right now that, again, is looking at businesses and commercial facilities, we're requiring them, we actually have agreements that they sign when they're developed and they install these kind of facilities, they're expected to kind of scrub that water before it gets into the storm drainage system. But we know we have to get stronger in this particular category, so we're pursuing a bit more-
And it would be required in your permit, the post-construction requirements.
Right. So again, back to public education, I, I venture to say engineers communicate a little differently than the rest of the people, but we definitely do when we're trying to write, you know, glitzy kind of information. I, I look at Clean Water Services webpages and, and their whole social networking, networking program, and we're not there yet, you know?
That don't happen by engineers.
That's right, it definitely wasn't, definitely wasn't. But I think that there's a lot of public education that, you know, we can definitely improve there, but I think we're, we're also doing a good, a good job with that. We're doing it through regional partners, regional coalition of Clean Rivers and Streams that you've probably seen there, we've got a next, next slide that I'll, that I'll show you. We've also been into the grade schools, we've tried connecting with fourth and fifth graders, gone straight to the schools with our big equipment, they all love that. This was one of our employees here, kind of showing them a stormwater model, and so that's been, that's been effective and well-received. And this, this year we did the, we're, we're still planning to go to at least one school, and we did the Earth Day of Community College, so that was, that was good. You've seen this ad, if, if no place else, you've seen it on the side of our street sweeper, but it's in the papers and everywhere else. This has been fairly effective program, and hopefully we'll see more of that kind of come through the Coalition for Clean Rivers and Streams. One of the things that this group has done is, over the last years, kind of look back to see how effective that program is, see how they might change it in the future. So I'm hoping for something fresh in the year, next year to come. We do, we, within the last couple of years, one of the things that we have done with our partners, other partners in the, under the Clackamas County permit, is combine our monitoring effort, because for the first permits, the first and second permit cycle, we were doing that monitoring individually, again, not doing a great job analyzing what that, what that, what that monitoring had. So we've since combined that effort and tried to spend our money a little more wisely with regard to how we, what kind of samples we take, how often we take them, what kind of pollutants we actually test for, those kind of things. So we feel a lot better about that sampling program. I forget what it's called, it's called our-
Snowmaw.
Yeah. So there's, there's several in-stream sites. We have two commercial sites which are near Oregon City Shopping Center area. And then we mentioned the dry weather field screening.
Your, your thing here showed how many, you only had 11, 11 outfalls sampled? I mean, 11 outfalls?
Well, comprehensive program, and Oregon City collects two of those, so Westland might collect one.
Well, you need 11 sites that you sample, and two of them are ours. I would say we had only 11 in Oregon City, and I'm sure we have lots more stormwater outfalls than 11, but-
I don't remember the number.
Yeah, okay, so I understand.
But we have quite a few, right?
Do you still monitor Cedar Creek? I thought that was-
Yes, that's one of them. We monitor it kind of upstream of the falls, actually right out here in front of the parking So our program costs, if you pay attention to your utility bill, your monthly charge $6.50 for stormwater utility, and I think that rate is scheduled to increase for the next couple of years, a couple of years more. That results in a budget of 1.6 million, of which we fund personnel services, our capital outweigh, material, outlay, materials services, and then we also contribute to the general fund from the Stormwater Fund.
On that, we have, it's a grand total at the bottom of our Public Works Personnel chart, we show 9.5 FTEs, and that's a real soup to nuts, kind of a sampling of Public Works employees, because you cover, our crew itself is 4.5 FTEs, so it's a small crew. Of course, it covers John's and my management administration, it covers Fran, Linda, Kathy, because they all work for the Stormwater Division, covers fleet services, it covers, we have summer help that comes in, and that all gets charged at. So while, when I look at 9.5, I think, oh, I have a tiny little stormwater division, but you know, it's because it captures part-time from so many people that does that, from the 4.5 people in the stormwater division, it, it adds up.
Typically, public or those, those positions like mine that are split are covered by the water fund, the sewer fund, the street fund, and, and stormwater fund.
And you're, you're expected to spend a quarter of your time in each one of those, because you probably need twice that, don't you?
Yeah.
So do I.
So the, the last thing I'll say before I turn this back over to Krista is, you know, what we do, I think, is warranted yet another hour of your time, and we'd be happy to bring that back to you if you'd like to hear more about Oregon City.
I think it's important, we're, we're going to be going into some public involvement phase of the new permits, and it's very important that we make sure that the city commission is very aware of what's going on with the permitting, and to do a public outreach so that the community understands our program, understands in the future, the resources are going to be needed, and the outcomes we're trying to achieve through the program. So this is definitely where we need to start, and here we are. Rob's on.
Last section. So I just wanted to cover now what's been going on with the permit, and talking with DEQ over the past two years about what's going to be in the permit and how things are going to change. And so there are basically nine issues I wanted to touch on really quickly. What we're expecting, we've seen a draft permit, it's close to being final, he's going to give us sort of a last draft to look at at the end of April, so it's getting close. And what we've seen in there is a lot of, there's a lot of requirements that will mean even more effort on the part of Oregon City. And so I'm going to list these nine elements. One is, we have the Solicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Program, there are more detailed requirements for that, specifically to have, basically it's more chemical monitoring of what's coming out when we find it.
So that's the, that's the dry weather screening.
Dry weather, yeah.
We see that, you know, do we, when we sample that, what do we sample it for, what level of, of analysis do we put in there? I mean, there's, there's a lot more than what we've typically done, which is look for color and, and odor.
It's going to be ramped up. Then under the public education program, there's a requirement to, basically to quantify, try and quantify changes in behavior that result from those public education activities, which is not an easy task.
How are you going to do that one?
And I think it's going to require surveys to be sent out on basic knowledge and follow-up on those surveys. So we're hoping that that's another one we can coordinate regionally on, it doesn't make sense for just each city to do that. And actually, the regional coalition that John mentioned has been doing some surveys, and so we're going to see if we can sort of tap into that and make use of that to meet the requirement. An inventory and inspection program resulting from new, so new development is required to implement water quality facilities, and there hasn't been a lot of work then to follow-up on those, make sure they're continuing to be maintained, and that's, we're finding that you go back to these facilities and somebody's filled them in or mowed over them or, so there's a lot more emphasis now on adding maintenance to our programs and inspections.
We, we do the public facilities regularly, but these are the ones that are on shopping private sites, like apartment complexes where it's not a subdivision with a lot of public water going into it, but it's like a Fred Meyer site, or I'm just using those generically. And what it, what we see is that we are going to have more of a regulatory role in requiring regular reporting from them, letting us know what kind of maintenance is being done. So it's, it's more of a documentation and making sure that those facilities are being taken care of, and then if not, we learn how to go in and do it to make sure it's done.
So that, that's actually a big one. The requirement, so there's an industrial inspection or monitoring requirement, they've thrown in the word "commercial" there too. So what they want us to do is, if there's a commercial-type business, like gas stations, for example, or an industrial business that we think could be contributor of significant pollutants, we're supposed to have some sort of inspection program for them. And then you've heard mention of the adaptive management process. I think Oregon City has definitely adaptively managed their stormwater management program over time, they find things that work and don't work and adjust things accordingly, but it's always been sort of an informal process. And DEQ would like to see more documentation of what is, what do you look at, how do you make changes? So we have to do some documenting of our process and then make sure we follow that. So that's the first five. The, the last few I have here, I have in a little more detail, because these are actually the big ones. One is, we have to develop a plan to identify and prioritize retrofits of our existing stormwater systems to address water quality. And what that means is, we have had to deal with new development, but all the development that's already there is basically untreated, except for when you street sweep and do things like that. But they want us to go in and come up with a plan and a priority list for putting retrofits in some of the areas that are already developed. And they want, I mean, it's basically like a master plan in a way. So this would result in more capital-type improvements. So that's a big one. Another one is, because our permit has been focused on pollutants, as I mentioned before, and flow is such a big issue with downcutting and streams and things, they want us to develop a hydro modification assessment plan. So hydro modification is what happens to these streams with too much flow. So this is going to be, and I think what we'll have to do is combine this with the retrofit plan, it's almost like a master planning effort, where you look at your whole system, figure out what's happening for hydro modification and water quality, and develop retrofits to address both of those things. Hydro modification may also need to be addressed in your new development standards, we may need to require developers not only to just treat runoff, but to reduce flows from runoff.
Sure understand what retrofitting means.
Okay, so retrofitting would be, if you have a storm system running through downtown, so it's from an area that's relatively not treated, maybe going and putting a structural filter in the system to, to treat the water before it goes into the stream, putting in a treatment system, basically. And I'll show you some examples of what those are in a second here.
Some dollars I have to push.
Capital projects.
It could also be, you know, taking a section, a neighborhood maybe that drains straight to the storm drainage system, and asking them to build something onsite that does, you know, rain garden filters, those kind of things, but again, are capital-related, that they might be on private property.
And actually, I mean, in some respects, you did kind of retrofitting on Beaver Creek Road, in terms of putting in the swales, and we're putting in a rain garden at Warner-Melanie Mall, so that's an area where it was previously untreated and will treat it. These kinds of things, previous, old kinds of master plans, you looked at where are our pipes overflowing, and then you come up with pipe replacement programs, upsides, et cetera. And this is much more looking at, it's, it's, it's very good, because it's looking at not just flooding, but water quality, which is what this program's all about. But for the community, it, these kinds of projects are big dollars, and that's my concern. I'm hoping that we're not in that bad a shape, because I'll, I'll try to stay optimistic about what the resulting capital program is going to be. But it could mean that we come up with some significant future construction capital, capital costs for our stormwater utility, which, that will generally ends up turning into rate increases, but we'll stay optimistic for now.
The eighth one is new development standards. So again, we already have new development standards. They didn't require us to address flow in a specific way, but they're basically requiring us to have low-impact development, and I'll show you some photos in a second, and to maximize keeping flows onsite. So they are, it's sort of a transitional period where they're allowing us to take our programs where we, we require new development to address water quality and to start thinking more about flow as well. And so they want us to kind of, you know, we've been requiring developers to address water quality, and they can put in filters or swales or anything, but they want us to start prioritizing now the types of facilities that infiltrate water into the ground to get rid of some of the flows, and that's referred to as low-impact development. So I have some photos here of what I'm talking-
In Oregon City, getting water to infiltrate into the ground is no easy task. We have very, very, highly impervious red soils here. So, but there are methods of constructing these so that you get as much as you possibly can to go into it. And there's also a lot of perched groundwater around here, which also makes it difficult. But there are, there's a lot of, a lot of innovative things that have been happening with these kinds of treatments, and we're open to all of them.
Interesting. I think the other point in, on that is that, you know, there's saturation, and so not only do we have to, you know, maybe require some of these innovative ways of dealing with the low-flow situations, in the high flow, we still have to build the conveyance systems that deal with that, so we're not dealing with property damage. So it's kind of a double hit. It's not like we can design these and not necessarily, you know, and design a smaller conveyance system, we still have to build and design the, the conveyance system that will minimize property damage in that huge event when everything's saturated.
Yeah, like, well, we had it in January of last year, we had a horrible, I mean, that was, that was in Oregon City, not throughout the region either. But even a couple of weeks ago, we had some really, really heavy rains, and those, I was actually getting really nervous about these new low-impact design standards we're going to be adopting and thinking, you know, what, we're going to have people calling us saying, my yard is flooding, and what am I going to do? And so it's, it's, that sort of pipe system probably needs to still be in place, it'll be, it'll be all new stuff, we're going to try. Just some examples, you know, site planning is where it should start, you know, thinking about the site before it's even developed and trying to reduce impervious areas. You know, a lot of roof gardens are going in, impervious driveways, regionally I'm talking about. So this is one way to start. And then once you have your development, having some vegetated systems, I noticed there's one in the parking lot here where you have a cut in the curb, the rain, the runoff flows in, and, you know, for example, right here.
Our Amtrak station right there.
Yeah, this is Amtrak here, Beaver Creek Road, and Nelson Nautilus parking lot. So there are some going in in Oregon City, and this is basically the wave of, of new stormwater management, is really getting as much infiltration as possible, reducing impervious areas and getting the water back into the ground where it would be naturally without development. And I'm just showing, oh, here's the Warner-Melanie Road plan as well, where a retrofit of a rain garden-type facility is planned.
Did you want to say anything?
I just think it's going to be a pretty impressive intersection when it's done, and, and not only will it look good, it'll, it'll treat-
It makes up for the tree across the street that was lost. Does anyone remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, some of these facilities are very attractive. I have a couple of examples here. One is, the top left corner is Sandy Boulevard, there's a series of these down Sandy Boulevard that were made kind of artsy, where folks sit, it's a commercial drive, so people sit on those. And the other one is Seattle, in a residential area, some street-side rain gardens, swale-type. This is in North Portland, new low-income housing, or an urban housing and development project, they have over 100 on-street rain gardens in this, in this project area.
These are good examples also of there are maintenance issues with these, there are maintenance requirements. And when you have a larger city, a larger agency that has a whole group working on this, you can establish these really great programs or partnerships between neighborhoods or, and here again, we're, we're a small community. We certainly are going to be striving for these things, but we're going to have to have a partnership with our public for maintaining what's in front of their streets or we would have to grow jobs, maintenance groups. So just another comment there.
Point out that, notice how large the tree, the areas where the trees are at.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's maybe.
Which not to be too negative here, we have difficulties with people keeping up their parking strips as it is. Furthermore, really. Having consistency with the maintenance, it's really a public education and partnership program to do.
So in the five minutes we have left?
I have a couple more slides.
I think you have two minutes, but I'll give.
Okay. So another quote of soils, these are in Oregon City, so vegetated soils, wetland type facilities, but those need a lot of space. Now getting down to pond type facilities, these are all sort of the retrofit type things that you could expect. And then when you don't have space, there's a lot of different proprietary devices with filters in them that you can put, you know, in your pipe system underground that filter the water.
All which require.
Do you have those now?
Yeah, we have several on, on private property and we have one that's public and we have more that are being proposed for public right now.
So this is the last issue that is going to be new in our permits. And I, I think this, I'm hoping that environmental groups will like this portion of the permit because I think it addresses partially what they're looking for is that we have, right now in the draft permit, they're asking that we do a TMDL wasteload allocation attainment evaluation, which means instead of just having these five year benchmarks, they want to know what will it take to get to the wasteload allocation? How much money would it cost to get there and what would be required and when will we get there? Because in some cases, like with bacteria, I'm not sure we could with the amount of cost. And in some cases, maybe it's just a few retrofits to get us there, but they're going to want to see an evaluation of that. That's really it. The conclusion is just that, you know, given the wide variability in pollutant sources and the effectiveness of these types of management practices, stormwater is just, it's complex. It's, there's no easy answers. And Oregon City's been adaptively managing and improving its stormwater management plan over time and striving to achieve the maximum extent practical standard. New requirements are already going to add to that. It's our maximum extent practical is going to be more maximum. So we're going to need significant resources already to address the new permit requirements. And I do think some of the new permit requirements will address some of the third party concerns or at least they'll have an evaluation of what, you know, their concern is, which is needing TMDL requirements, I'm hoping.
So Nancy, just a timeline then on completing this work.
Well, I believe that DEQ was going to be issuing their 45 day or whatever day they applicant review period in mid-June. And then we review it. I think they turn it around a week later for a 30 day public comment period where they get comments and then they hope to issue the permit in September. I think it would be, if you wouldn't mind, we would like to bring back when we actually have a permit that's been issued. We're still doing some negotiating. It's getting close. And there, there have been a lot of memorandum, memorandum issued by DEQ, but we're still not perfectly clear what the final permit is going to look like and all the issues that we talked about, the items, the new items. So I imagine that would be probably in May or June, we bring this thing back to the commission for the update.
It's very complex, they were review. Question, Daphne?
On the slide preceding this one, if you can go back because I changed. So is this a good thing now that you're going to have to attach a budget to it? So can you justify why you have or haven't done something because of the cost?
I think, I think it could be a good thing. It's just that it's going to require resources to do. I mean, as John mentioned, there's so much administrative work. We've been spending two years negotiating this permit, which has taken a lot of time. Now we have to do all these additional evaluations, so it's going to take resources. But I do think, and actually I think DEQ was trying to say, you know, we keep saying we'll never meet these DM, or these bacteria wasteload allocations. It's impossible unless we go out and start, you know, killing wildlife. So I think showing that.
The, the.
Showing what it would take and whether it's possible. Aggrega has already put together some examples of this for some of their pollutants. And in some cases, maybe we'll be able to show that, yeah, we can do this, but it's going to take us 50 years, given the capital project costs. So it's just trying to get some reality put into it now and to see how practicable it is. And they'll have to make decisions about how far they want to push on that.
Voila, voila. Okay. Quick question.
And then these standards are, this DEQ permit's being challenged in Oregon, so other states don't have as rigid standards or it's very.
Actually, our neighboring states, Washington and California have very stringent standards, especially California. I think that DEQ is giving us some time to figure out what makes the most sense to do this sort of watershed planning. Where should we have projects that address this hydro modification? Where should we have retrofits? In California, they're just being told, you know, retain all the water onsite. In Washington, they actually have a requirement that they have to do low impact development and they have to address flows. So we're, DEQ has told us, we got to get our plans in place and do what makes the most sense. But in the next permit period, we're going to have to implement this stuff. So that's in the West. Now there are a lot of places farther east that, yeah, much less stringent. So it's kind of across the board. It's just we're stuck in between two states that have a high standard.
Okay, last quick question, Doug.
You had Baltimore Creek, but is that a watershed for an agriculture area?
No, Baltimore Creek is actually, it's in Portland and it goes through Forest Park. So there really is no, not much development in there.
My question would be, if you came up with several creeks like that, they're doing the same kind of thing, are the standards too high?
Standards too high.
You said they weren't needed, I mean, even Baltimore Creek, some of those categories wasn't, wasn't even the standard.
Well, I think that's part of the problem with water quality. It's like, I like to use the analogy, like, how many cigarettes could you smoke before you got lung cancer? It would be different for every person in this room. Yet they have to set a standard to protect water quality that, you know, applies to all these streams because they don't have stream specific standards. So in some cases for phosphorus, if you have biphosporous soils, the standards are probably too high, but that's federal regulations, so we're kind of stuck with it.
The TMDLs are actually more focused per a particular river or stream. There's a lot more, it's not widespread like, like the other water quality standards are.
Quickie?
Yeah, just wanted to point out, following up on what Nancy just said, on the TMDL, the Willamette River TMDL actually includes the lower stretches of the tributaries into the Willamette. So the Willamette River TMDL stretches up to Clackamas River, I think beyond city limits for Oregon City. That's just a point I wanted.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see more about this. Great.
Thank you. That's interesting.
We have a group here from, for the South Fork Water Board, but I hate to make people from other communities wait because we have the city manager from Westland and I think, I'm not sure who else is with him. Do you mind? Yeah, maybe move that up. That'd be okay. What I want to do. Do you have anything with that forward? Okay. John, if you and the South Fork Water Board people would like to come forward, we're going to take that one next. I know we have guests here this evening, so. Welcome. Glad to have you here to talk about the loan to South Fork Water Board. We discussed this at a city council meeting and now we're here to talk about it more informally.
Madam Mayor. I said Madam Chair.
Either way, it's funny.
Anyway, I was here at the last council meeting to talk about a proposed loan for $2.4 million from the South Fork Water, or from the City of Oregon City to the South Fork Water Board. And in that meeting, Commissioner Neely asked to talk about Westland's participation in that and I promised to come back with some information on Westland. Anyway, tonight to join United Church Seals Finance Director, City of Westland, and we have the city manager, Chris Jordan, is with us if there's any questions. Of course, David Wimmer's working with us as well. So we're here for just a question and answer session. If you have any more questions on the loan or even, we're here to answer the questions.
Okay, I think the first question probably was, so you've given us all the detailed information, we have the review here. So I think the question is Westland's participation. So we want to get right into that and then we want to get in the background.
Good evening, I'm Richard Seals, I'm the Finance Director for the City of Westland. And we, we met with John and we went through, out of that meeting, we went back and looked at all of our fund balances and we, we basically came to the conclusion that we're just not in a financial position like Oregon City happens to be in to be able to participate. And so that's kind of where we were at. Our biggest reserves that we have available is in our service, sorry, in our sewer fund, which is our sewer rate revenues building up for capital projects. And there's about 900 there.
900 is what?
900,000, I'm sorry. And, and you know, overall, there's 3 million in city by, but compared to 30. So, you know, we're just not, we're just not in the same position.
I think one of the reasons I presented that question was we, I guess we benefited from our city manager, our, excuse me, our budget director also being the budget person for, for South Fork. And then I guess, I'm not on that board, but I guess the benefit there of having Westland actuate tells something about their figures would be helpful because we're doing honors to the facility and usually you think of joint contributions being made and that is my major concern. But apparently we're, we're at this moment luckier than you are.
And the benefit will be all to Oregon City because we're taking the risk. And I guess my question always is, if it can't be a cash contribution, is there a non-cash way that Westland can contribute?
Certainly, in fact, we offered with John to work with him and, and help him in other ways, you know, contacting bondholders, the credit agency firms that we can help with notifying them. And we could also help when he goes to refund existing bonds. You know, I'm pretty familiar with dance refundings and current refundings and we offered all those types of services, all those non-financial ways, if that's what you're referring to.
Things like that. Are digging stormwater retention ponds or?
Yeah. My hands aren't really up to it too much, but.
Hands gloves.
Yeah.
Tim?
Couple of questions on this proposed loan. For the representative from Westland, when we had the presentation last time, it was recommended to us that at least we make sure that Westland was a cosigner and accepted liability if they weren't going to accept financial participation in the loan. Has Westland, has the Westland City Commission agreed to do that?
We haven't brought it before them, but I mean, we're a 50% owner in South Fork anyway, so we're already, you know, we already share. Right, so, but I mean, whatever, you know, if, if there's a further signature that you would like, I'm certain that that wouldn't be a problem.
Daphne? Mr. Collins, I thought maybe you would care to, care to bring us up to date on some of the background of how Oregon City and Westland have worked together through the, what, in 1905? Is that what it was?
1950.
1950. Well, 10 years off, that wasn't too bad. But, you know, how they've worked as partners in our water issues through the years and, you know, for the other people here that aren't on South Fork.
Well, I can give you a great example and unfortunately it's the only example I have tonight. It's been a 50/50 partnership for quite a long time, but as you can remember, just a few years ago, the City of Oregon City and the South Fork Water Board, there were some issues with an authority with CRW. And so the issue was the boundaries, the service area for the City of Oregon City. And the South Fork Water Board participated and helped in that program. And I remember the work session that we had at the City of Westland, they wholeheartedly supported any expenses that South Fork might incur to do that to help Oregon City protect their service areas because they are partners and what, what would benefit them would benefit us all. So that's, that's an example of, that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, that's a great analogy. The loan will benefit us, but in turn it will benefit them.
Doug?
The console that I had, you've included specific reasons why there's been issues dropping revenues from systems development charges, other, other districts that have purchased our water or are not purchasing this waste water, so we don't have that kind of a revenue source. What can you do to convince me this is not going to be a continuing issue?
I can tell you that the majority or a large percentage of our issues have been fees that we paid for attorneys. And our water rights issues are going to some kind of a closure and we expect those, I'll use the polite word Nasi bills to slow down. We also are in litigation with Clackamas River Water. We're scheduled to be in court May 5th. It's our hopes that we'll settle that before that, but even if we don't, throughout this fiscal year, well, as this fiscal year sunsets, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees that shouldn't be next, we shouldn't incur next year. And as well, the interest savings on this loan gave South Fork a considerable amount of money in interest, so i.e. the less interest we're paying, the less expenditures too. So I think those are a pretty good benefit as well.
Next question is really directed to our city manager. When it comes to the decision, I will be making whether to give the loan or not, but we, we have discussions about which specific loans this loan should be made out of.
I believe we'll be making a recommendation that I think is already in this, in the background that you have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? I think so. I think so. Go ahead, Tim.
I'd like to speak about the interest rate. When you came last time, you proposed, I think, an interest rate of 2.5% for the loan. Okay, how was that interest rate decided upon?
How was it defined, decide? Well, that interest rate was put together by Finance Director David Wimmer, so I'd refer to his answer.
It seemed like it was a fair rate. It was something, it was. If the interest rate, our government pool rate goes up, when we put this thing together, this is maybe, it's going to happen to be the lowest rate we've ever seen. Government pool plus one and a half percent, so the rates happen to go to 5%. I'd be losing.
Why, why, I looked up the bonds on the, on the web and the interest rates the bonds are paying now range from, I think, two to five something. And it seems to me that if we're going, the issue with South Fork Water Board is meeting the, the bond covenants. So we're doing South Fork a favor in that sense. And I guess one of the considerations is for that favor, should we also be doing the additional favor of lowering, lowering South Fork's interest rates on their existing debt? And I, it seems for us as a city commission, as opposed for, you know, South Fork Water Board itself, our fiduciary to our taxpayers is to get the highest return that's feasible and responsible, and that may be above 2.5%. The school board's charging us 4.5% on the proposed ESO loan, so I wonder if 2.5% for this loan is perhaps too low.
We're charging ourselves too. The more we charge, the more we're going to have to raise our rates.
Yeah. And that issue of arm's length is my question for the city attorney. Is there, because the majority of the city commission is also on the South Fork Water Board, are there conflict issues with this? school board's charging us four point five percent on the proposed decent loan. So I wonder if two point five percent for this loan is perhaps to run.
Charging ourselves too. The more we charge, the more we're going to have to raise our rates.
Yeah. And that issue of arm's length is my question for the City Attorney. Is there, because the majority of the city commission is also on the South Fork Water Board, are there conflict issues with this?
All right. I, uh, this, this question hasn't come up, uh, before. Um, certainly the, the question of whether or not the, the city could loan to South Fork was something that, that had come up. Um, I believe there's an exemption and have to look through the statute for, uh, um, involved, when there's conflict of interest, if the business is a governmental entity, you don't have the same conflict issues that you do for a, a private business. And let me look into that a little bit. And I'll, I can make sure that I have that answer for you. But I, um, you know, I, I, I haven't looked at whether or not there's anything that would prevent the members of this commission from voting on that loan. Um, so let me, let me look into that.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question is, I guess they're both David and Bill, um, because I don't know, one of you might have the answer off the top of your head. The two proposed, um, funds that I think I recall that this loan would be made from were the General Fund and the Purse Fund. And, and I assume you've checked into whether there are no restrictions on using either of these funds for such a purpose? Okay.
We would have invested half of one percent.
Four. So I guess, um, my last question would be, um, on the interest income from this loan, would there be any restrictions on that usage? Could, could that interest profit be applied to anywhere in our budget? Okay, so, so the, the Purse money would not be restricted. That would have to go back to the Purse Fund. Okay.
You're talking about the nearly four hundred thousand dollars in savings.
Yeah. Oh, and, and, um, there's also the issue, and I think I raised this last time, with the charter provision, um, the, the, um, the three percent cap, and I think that's ending in twenty thirteen?
Twenty fourteen.
Um, does that charter provision raise any issues regarding this?
Regarding the loan, I can't, you know, I mean, as, as I understand it, the, the net result of the loan would actually reduce the city's need to raise rates in the future. So, you know, because of the charter restriction, this actually makes sense from the city's side as well.
So you mean you'd use some of that money for the water fund? Is that what you're saying? The services we provide for the water fund. So this deal seems to be separate.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm not even talking about, my understanding is that if the, if the loan isn't made, South Fork could have increased its rate. It could have an impact on Oregon City rates. So by doing the loan, thus the profits go, South Fork is going to have to raise their rates, therefore city rates.
That's right, yeah.
That's, that's my-
But the, um, the way our, the way the system is set up, the first, first ever we know we're going to get a rate increase in South Fork anyway, so the amount of money or the water we purchase from them at a wholesale rate, um, the rate will go up because of the situation. And it's better than it would be if we didn't give them the loan. But that does not, that does not go directly to the customer. That is observed by the water fund. So we still purchase the water and we just pay more for it, but we cannot, um, transfer that rate increase to the customer. So.
Okay.
There is a case for that, David. The rate, we're just in a position where we were not meeting our covenants. We can't raise whatever our, our rates were at three percent.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I would like, in terms of us, to have the worst case scenario coming for us in terms of the use of the Purse Funds. Because I've heard some, I've heard some real concerns at the state level in terms of this, what this recession is doing to the tier one. I know we've made some real good decisions in terms of that set aside. But when we come, when we come to making that loan, I'd like to have the worst case scenario during the period of time of the loan, for the Purse. Well, that's what I, I just want to see numeric, a numeric, a numeric worst case scenario presented.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Coming in and we're giving it that important issue. Okay? I'm sorry. Moved out.
I just want to make a last comment that I hope we can consider if we do make this loan. At least on the general fund proportion of it, um, interest profit comes along dedicating that, those funds to water conservation. So I'll just throw that idea out there.
We can talk about that, yeah, when it comes back. Okay, next, um, the Singer Falls Rotary Project, Marshall. Are you just hitting this up? Okay. In the interest of full disclosure, I just wanted to, um, say that, um, you are actually going to be applying for a Metro Enhancement Grant with this project. We all sit as part of Metro Enhancement, um, uh, Funding Board. And so I talked with our attorney about whether that's a conflict of interest. And he assured me that, um, being able to listen to it as an information item.
Yeah, there's, there's no, you're not supposed to provide when you're making those Metro Enhancement awards, so you can use whatever information you want. There's no, you know, unless her presentation is so good that you have no choice but to grant the enhancement funds, you know, then you create bias.
There are more people than us to convince, anyway.
And I'm slowly working on a one by one. I've been spending a lot of time on this. Thank you very much for, uh, for allowing me to present the student to the commissioners as well. Um, I am Marshall Wimmer. I am President of the Rotary Club of Oregon City. I also, um, live here in Oregon City and work here in Oregon City. I'm Development Director for Walnut Falls, uh, excuse me, Province Walnut Falls. And then I also represent, I am a, a Board Member of the Main Street Oregon City. So I've got a lot of passion about Oregon City and I'm very excited about this as a potential project. Uh, and the club is very excited about that as well. Um, I've come to you though, wearing my Rotary Hat and Rotary Button. Um, we are going to be celebrating our seventy-fifth birthday here in Oregon City in two thousand and eleven. We were actually chartered in nineteen thirty-six and admitted to Rotary International the end of that year. And so in thinking about what we could do, uh, to celebrate our heritage, uh, here in Oregon City, got to keep talking about some kind of project that we could, uh, facilitate here in Oregon City itself. And, um, I started dreaming over a year ago, uh, probably talking in my sleep, I'm sure Dave would attest to that, about what I would like to do. Um, and I rounded up to a project task force where we actually, uh, pulled together some ideas and several recommendations. But all of this really started stemming from, not only from celebrating our seventy-fifth anniversary, but we had Cheryl Snow from the Clackamas Arts Alliance as a speaker last July at Rotary, talking about the economic impact of public art. And so putting together our wanting to celebrate our anniversary and public art and economic impact, and then the revitalization of Oregon City, um, this is where this is really coming from. So we have five Rotarians, many of which you already know, that are on this task force, have also invited Lloyd Purdy, the Main Street Oregon City Executive Director, and Cheryl Snow from the Arts, uh, Alliance, to work with us on this task force and formulate recommendations, which we took three, uh, to Rotary and voted on one of them. And the one that we want to work on, um, and the one that we highly recommend it is the one that we want to move forward on. Uh, the purpose of this seventy-fifth anniversary project is really to, um, acknowledge Rotary's tenure here in the community through creating public art and enhancing landscapes. Uh, we also want raise funds for enhancements and for the professional oversight of the project and the art itself. We wanted to create a signature service project and have fundraising projects, uh, around this. It's not all about Rotary, although a lot of people see Rotarians as crusty old men with a lot of money. Um, I think I show that that's not true. Uh, and then also the seller, our club's charter. So what we wanted to do, um, and a lot of this has come from the cleanup around the Falls project and the excitement that that has generated as it's opened up a landscape around that and the potential for additional enhancements there. So we've kind of broken it down into three different aspects. Um, one is, if you can imagine with me, uh, the, uh, where Eighth Street busts into Railroad Avenue at the foot of the Falls. Um, can you actually get this on your screen? You're just not seeing it up there. The old pioneer sign that is at the foot of the Falls, like, we all think is very dated. We would love to have that be replaced. Um, and we want to propose that that be so. With what is going on with Main Street Oregon City, there is a lot of activity that is going on around Main Street, uh, including the, uh, Winter Market, which has now been so successful with the, um, uh, Winter Market that you had this last winter, that that has been enhanced with a number of markets that we will have in the summer, also down on Main Street. That is at the corner, or is right there, or where Eighth Street busts into Railroad Avenue. So that is really a great place to start with this project. Um, we have some suggestions that might be formatted, uh, that you could look at. Uh, it could be a mosaic mural. Um, I've got some samples. It's really too bad that you can't see these. And I don't know if you want me to wait. Okay, uh, so this is one example. And the, the sample that I'm showing you is just to have you, to help you think outside the box about possibilities. It's not that this is what we're going to do, because we do have a call for artists that we're going to be out there with. Uh, it could be a mosaic tile wall project. Uh, this is one that's in Fort Collins, Colorado. So we're not going to be constructing a wall. We are going to be putting art on the wall. So you're not looking at that wall there. You're looking at what is actually on the wall itself. Uh, this is another way of, uh, using, um, hand-formed and extruded mosaic trims with stoneware over the tile, or stoneware, uh, tile over concrete. That's another possibility. Uh, it could actually be a carved mural, such as these are. Uh, or even a, uh, this is a carved mural, uh, from the University of Denver School of Music as a facade. Um, and so any of this could be of the history of Oregon City. It could be wayfinding, you know, this way to the Falls, this way to the elevator, this way to some great restaurants, whatever. Uh, but we want it to show and have a flavor of Oregon City and the history of Oregon City, but not just the history, the future as well. So as we walk up the grand staircase, and, and I've been up and down this many times with this project in mind, and I've just been so excited about the potential and the phases that we can bring this in over a period of time. Uh, but as we walk around to the top of the Falls and turn the corner up there, for lack of another name, I'm calling it the Singer Falls Garden at City Hall, because there's City Hall and there's this little park area, patch, whatever is out there, that we can do some landscape with. And that building, the pump house, has a lot of potential as well. And so we would like to also do a call for artists to do something with that pump house. And what I failed to point out to you is when you're down on Main Street or on Eighth Street and you're looking up, you can see the pump house. And I think it would be really great to have light shining, at least on the backside, that people down on Main Street are looking up there and saying, what is that up there? Let's go up the grand staircase and see what it is about. So I see both of those projects as endpoints to what another major project could be in the middle. So if somebody is up here and they're looking at the gardens, they're looking at the art, um, of this building, and then they see there's more down below, so they actually can go down and visit what is going on down there and see more of Oregon City and vice versa. As people are down there looking up, it's a connector, uh, between the two. Uh, so there's a lot of, I think, a small potential that we could do there, but also make it very attractive. Don't panic, we're not going to rebuild the pump house. But if we look at this as helping us to think again outside the box, uh, we were originally thinking that this could be like a Japanese garden. Uh, we don't know about that. We, we're going to be talking more with the people that we want to be involved with this. But that building, if you look at the pump house on the front, the curved roof, although it is in opposite direction of what the, the pagoda would be, could be very cleverly, um, decorated, painted, whatever, uh, to look like something. It could be a, a reverse pagoda or something, but, uh, mosaic work that might depict the children or the youth of Oregon City, or maybe even the history. Uh, the one on the left doesn't really show what I think Oregon City could do, but you could have a painted mural. It could be patriotic. You know, there's any number of things that we could do with that. Um, and then the third aspect is actually doing some landscape enhancement around the Falls itself. And we have had so many, we have actually heard so many comments in the public about, wow, I didn't know the Falls were there. Or it brings up stories about, oh, remember the lights that used to be in the Falls? I mean, there's so much. This just really cries out for art and lights and community involvement. And I was originally thinking, you know, there's a wall, we could put something on the wall. But then I thought the brickwork is so beautiful itself. You know, landscaping around that would just enhance that. Um, so look at those two pictures, how dark and brown and, you know, plain that is. And, and bringing in Oregon natives. And we've been visiting with John Lewis about what we can do there. And he is helping us. He come up with a list of suggested plants that, uh, take little care. Um, they are Oregon natives. They're used to being under a canopy and don't get a lot of, uh, of rain and sunshine. And so we do have, uh, some plans we are going to be addressing, uh, about that later. But again, that's also called out for art. And I can envision here from now, fish leaping up the Falls or, or something within the Falls itself, and whether it's metal, uh, or whether it's a little more, you know, artistic. I, I don't know, but really think about, thinking outside the box. Uh, we presented this to the Rotary Club, uh, about a month or so ago. And I pointed out that the big fish on the left is actually a nail box, but it loves the art on it. Somebody was very clever. But we can incorporate some of Oregon City and Oregon's history throughout this, uh, project as well. Uh, so the task force recommended the Singer Falls project to be the one that we want to carry forward for Rotary, because it creates excitement and builds community support through various phases. And we are recommending three phases over a period of time. Phase one, which we are starting on right now, is the Singer Falls Art Wall. And I'm calling this the Rotary Phase, because it's going to be funded by the Rotary membership or by our club. We are going to be funding that ourselves. And it makes a statement about Rotary and that Rotary is here. A second phase would be the Singer Falls Garden at City Hall, or another name, whatever it is, whatever it could be. Um, this received as a community service club space. And I'm already talking with other service clubs here in Oregon City. In fact, uh, next week I'm talking with Alliance Club at their meeting, uh, about getting them involved, uh, talking with this, uh, Kulanis, Lopotimus Lions, um, various organizations, and of course, the McLaughlin neighborhood, because we would like their buy-in on whatever we do with that gardenery and the pump house. Um, this will be funded through community service clubs and their work, that piece of it up there. And it makes a statement about community service, which is what we are all about. Uh, the third phase would be the landscape enhancement. Uh, this is a community phase, and it's funded through community donations, grants, and other fundraising events. And it makes a statement about community. Um, there is, um, project administration and art selection. And we are actually going to be working with, um, Cheryl Snow and the Arts Alliance to actually lead us through that. There will be a selection committee of stakeholders, not all Rotarians, to help make that decision as to what art is selected through all of the phases, whatever art we do. Uh, we don't need to necessarily talk about how to install the art project. Uh, but then each of the phases would also have their administration and if there is an art aspect to that, uh, art selection there as well. So the community involvement and the project funding would come from, uh, several different sources. We actually are going to make a, an application to the Oregon City Metro Enhancement Committee, uh, for a grant. We also have been approached to make a grant from, uh, requested grant from Key Bank. We also have been approached to make a grant from, uh, requested grant from Key Bank, who has, uh, some funds that they are doing in conjunction with the Rose Festival. They have five thousand dollar grants maximum, uh, that they will be granting. Uh, the application deadline is coming up soon, April thirtieth. And then they're going to let the winners know by May first. So I don't know what the criteria, uh, it is or are that they can make a, uh, decision that quickly. But we are hoping to, uh, take advantage of that and have them help us. The only thing with that is that the FUTB project has to be completed by May thirty-first. So we have a month. And so in picking apart this project, and we've been talking with John Lewis about this, we thought that's at least beginning on some of the landscape enhancements and getting those plants in there, uh, and seeing if we can make that happen. Also, uh, community fundraising aspect, we will be doing, uh, community fundraising through the First City Celebration, which is on Saturday, July thirty-first, and this is in Main Street, Oregon City, um, for this event, and they have invited the Rotary Club of Oregon City to actually be responsible for the wine garden, or wine and beer, whatever tastes are. So we'll be asking for the community for some funding beginning with that. And I think as they come to the First City Celebration, if any of the landscaping is completed, or at least started in there, they will have a taste of what that's all about, and I, we're just hoping to bring everybody on board with this project. So again, this was informational, want to let you know what's going on, so there are no surprises in what's going on in your backyard, but I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. For hearing more about this, thank you so much. And then get our grant, um, proposal. Now, Doug?
I just want to express my appreciation for your pronunciation of the father of Oregon. Barack Obama?
Probably. I don't know if you come second nature, but you're very welcome.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Next item on our agenda is the Walnut Falls Heritage Area Coalition. This is really quick, because we, you have some papers.
Did you, did you notice how she, she ignored her, accused her hurry, hurry, hurry her along, like we do?
You guys are, you're cow's issue, and I'm going to have to get a whip out. Okay, this is a, um, this, you know about the Walnut Falls Heritage Area, and this is the, um, the Declaration of Cooperation, similar to what we put together for the Locks Coalition. This is only a draft, it's going to be greatly changed. Um, we are in transition, because one of the others, our staff person, sort of casually will be getting us a, a new staff person. But if you turn to the end, the, this is, um, where each of the stakeholders, I think there's about twenty-five of them, and there'll be many more as we move along, will, um, put together, and our, the sample that we did for the Locks is on the back. Um, so the City of Oregon City can pass a resolution to say that we will participate in the Walnut Falls Heritage Area Coalition, will provide leadership, letters of support, and, and funding. Um, we're looking for, um, five thousand dollars, I think Scott Archer was saying that that could, I, I know that we agree that it was something that we could do. We, we announced our city commission, uh, our city manager to provide a place where that fund could come from. I think it's landed in the Parks Department because of, actually Scott's and his department's been fairly involved in some of the public outreach. But, um, I think in the interest of time, since my computer didn't work to get you the sample, um, uh, if you have questions, glad to talk about that, and then, um, probably would like to bring this to the city commission meeting, a resolution of support, and we can talk about that then. So, uh, Tim? You want to answer this item?
No, I didn't. No, this was the last one.
Okay, okay, great. Um, in the interest of time, I think we'll move off of that, because I don't want to keep the Urban Renewal Commission waiting, but you can look at this. All right, if there's anything more, it's each come before us, see the next report. Anything to say here? Okay, we are adjourned, and take five minutes, and then we.